Ladies and gentlemen, if we could all take our seats, we're about to begin. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve Morello. I am the Counselor to Chairman and CEO of MTA. I'll serve as the Hearing Officer for tonight's public hearing. If you'll bear with me for a moment, I have to read a rather lengthy statement for the record and provide some instructions. This hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on proposed changes in the fares, tolls, and charges affecting transportation on MTA subways and buses, commuter railroads, nine bridges and tunnels in the Staten Island Railroad. The hearing also provides opportunity for the public to comment on MTA's proposal to permanently establish weekend service and expand weekday evening service on the Q-103 local bus route operated by MTA Bus Company on Vernon Boulevard between Astoria and Hunter's Point in Queens. To make the public aware of this hearing, advertisements were published in the Daily News, Newsday, New York Times, Journal News, Poughkeepsie Journal, Daily Challenge, the Amsterdam News, and El Diario, and notices of hearings were posted on the MTA website and bilingual signs on stations, buses, and trains and marked, I'm sorry, and mailed to other interested parties and elected officials. The MTA's website, www.mta.info, describes these proposals in detail and includes tables of proposed fares for MTA's commuter railroads, the Long Island Railroad, and Metro North, as well as for the MTA bridges and tunnels and the proposed crossing charges. Details of these proposals are available from the information tables outside at the rear of the hearing room. Look for brochure if you haven't seen it. It looks like this. They have them at the table out back where you may also ask our staff questions or fill out comment forms. The public is also encouraged to submit written comments via our website or by mail to KC Morgan at the MTA 2 Broadway, 4th floor, New York, New York 10004. And the staff at the tables outside can provide you that address as well. If you have written comments that you would like to submit this evening, you may hand them to an usher or drop them off at the information table. This proceeding is not an open question and answer session. The members of the MTA Board of Directors and our staff are here to listen to what members of the public have to say about the proposals, so the public comments are taken into account prior to the final decision being made by the MTA Board on the proposals. So Board members will be listening, not commenting. However, there is expert staff, as I said, at the tables outside to take and answer questions and provide information on the service fare and toll changes. All spoken comments presented tonight, all correspondence, emails that we receive, all comment cards, will be incorporated in the official hearing record and reviewed by the MTA Board prior to its vote on the proposals. In addition to the hearings, and in an effort to provide additional opportunities for the public to comment, the MTA is also holding four satellite sessions at which public comments may be videotaped. These videotaped remarks will also be transcribed and enter into the record that will be reviewed by our Board. The dates and locations of the satellite sessions are also available in the brochure or at the table. For the record, today's date is December 1st, 2014. The time is about eight minutes after 5:00, and the hearing site is the Baruch Performing Arts Center in Mason Hall of Baruch College, 17 Lexington Avenue in Manhattan. Before we begin, I'd also like to explain the procedures for tonight's public hearing. First, I'll call the names of a few of the people who have registered to speak in the order in which they were registered, and this includes people who pre-registered. This could include those who registered online or by mail or registered in person tonight. If you wish to speak but have not signed up, please fill out a registration form before 8:00 PM when we will stop taking registrations. For those who have pre-registered to speak either by telephone or on our website, if you haven't already, we ask that you sign in at the table for preregistments outside the room so that we know you're with us tonight. I'll call out the names and groups of two or three registered speakers. When I call your name, please hold up the yellow registration card that you received, then we know you're here, until an usher can escort you to the podium, and then I'll call your names in the order in which they were registered. When you approach the microphone, please provide us with your name and state any affiliation that you may wish to announce. So that we can hear from all interested people tonight, and so we can be fair to all, please ensure that your remarks not exceed three minutes. The clock below will indicate how much time you have remaining, and when you have spoken for two and a half minutes, a bell will sound and you should begin to conclude your remarks. If you run out of time, remember you may submit your complete written testimony to supplement your oral testimony. The hearing site is accessible to people who are impaired, and sign language interpreter services are available, and your comments will be interpreted and entered into the record. This public hearing is being video recorded and will appear on the MTA website within one week from today at www.mta.info under the section titled "About the MTA." Now, I'd like to introduce to you the Board members and senior staff of the MTA who are here tonight. To my right is Chairman and CEO of the MTA, Thomas Prendergast. To his right, Board Member Susan Metzger, Board Member Jeffrey Kay, Board Member Alan Capelli, Board Member Andrew Alpert, Jim Ferrara, President of MTA Bridges and Tunnels, Michael Haratnashanu, President of MTA Capital Construction, Pat Noakowski, President of the Long Island Railroad, and Michael Schiffer, Vice President for Planning at Metro North Railroad. To my left are Andrew Saul, Board Member, Board Member Jonathan Balin, Board Member Ira Green, Joe Leader, the Senior Vice President for Subways at New York City Transit, and John Kevlin, Vice President from TA Bus Operations. So, thank you very much for enduring that, and now we'll begin. Our first speaker, I'm sorry, who's here?
Ira Greenberg.
I'm told that Ira Greenberg, our Board Member is here, and I apologize for leaving him out. Our first speaker is Armando Chapellican, I hope I have that correct, and he'll be followed by Jay Rosenthal. Armando Chapellican? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for calling me first. As you said, my name is Armando Chapellican. I work here in Manhattan. I take the NQ train and then the 456 on a daily basis. I know a lot of the focus today is specifically on the fares, but I do just want to also address some of the larger issues, when especially it comes to issues like capital funding and long-term projects. In terms of the two proposals that you've put together and that we're looking at today, the way that I see it is the fact that this is something that continually has to keep on happening in terms of, the fares need to be adjusted in terms of inflation, so I understand that facet, but at the same time, you have a large part of the community, a large part of the public, that admittedly isn't here, that relies on the service that the MTA provides, and what they largely end up seeing is stagnant service. That being said, looking at the two proposals again, in terms of what I've been seeing, it seems like Proposal 1 does more to prioritize the needs of riders, since it does, while it does increase the fares, it does still have an increase in the bonus from 5% to 11%. So in that regard, if the general thought was just in terms of what I specifically see as the better option for riders of the two proposals, I would say that Option 1, or Proposal 1, makes more sense, specifically because it does, in my opinion, seem to prioritize the focus of riders by offering that increase in the bonus. That being said, I do think that the long-term focus for the MTA should be on improving the services. I did mention before in terms of some of the long-term projects, like I mentioned, I do rely very much, like a lot of people, on the 456 line. That being said, I definitely am always looking to see updates on what's happening with the Second Avenue subway, because a lot of people, especially during rush hour, would rely very heavily on the changes coming, and once the Second Avenue subway would be complete, ideally, people are looking at better commutes. And as someone who takes that subway line on a regular basis, I definitely do want to see that being completed as soon as possible. That being said, if this is, if the discussions that we're having right now in terms of adjusting the fares and making those changes, if that can make that reality happen, then I'm happy to see this happen, and I guess I'm open to the possibility of the fares going up, as long as, again, priority is on riders and making sure that they're getting the most bang for their buck, essentially. That being said, also, I want to make sure that priority is still being maintained on, maintaining the cleanliness of the subway lines. I know a lot of us, again, some people who may not be here, have seen a lot of situations where their subways aren't as clean as they could be, but at the same time, I have noticed that, by and large, a lot of the subway cars are staying clean. And the last thing would also just be in terms of improving service overall by making sure that you're prioritizing, updating the subway cars that currently are out in the system to make sure that a lot of them can have countdown clocks, similar to, as are the ones in a lot of the number lines. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. As I said, our second speaker is Jay Rosenthal. He will be followed by Sherad Staton. I did not hear a bell ring at 2:30 of the first speaker's comments, so just be aware of the clock. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you to all of you in the MTA administration for giving me and everyone in New York who wants to have a voice here, the opportunity to express our concerns. As someone with epilepsy and narcolepsy that severely impairs my ability to drive, I rely very, very heavily on public transportation. And I'm a college graduate as well, in between being a graduate and going back to graduate school, so in terms of working, I do have a very tight budget, and public transportation does take a significant amount out. However, I believe there's an expectation that with any fare hike, small or large, that quality of service will improve in ways that the commuter will notice, as well as ways to cut costs, so that we do not have another fare hike in the next five years. And I don't want to have to say, I remember when it was 220, when subway fares were 225, when I'm only 23. So, in terms of the fare hike in the metro cards, I think it's important to keep the bonus, even though it's uneven, because a lot of people end up losing metro cards, or you have tourists who will not use everything, which leaves some residual money on there that is not used, and although it would probably minisculely contribute to the quarterly revenue of the MTA, that's definitely a lot better than nothing. I also believe that as commuters move north, it's very important to increase direct service into and out of Grand Central Terminal, particularly the commuters who commute from central Dutchess County, Dover Plains, to Hesey, especially because they are in a higher fare zone, which of course means higher fares, and also dual-mode diesel locomotives are also a little less expensive to run, making that a very interesting prospect. I also believe that Waterbury is very underserved, and by increasing bidirectional service there and all the way to Stamford, I think that that could also be a way to be able to earn more without increasing fares. I think that I think we need to cut costs while raising this fare.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. Our next speaker is Sherad Staton, to be followed by John Benjamin.
My name is Sherad Staton. I'm a student. I go to BMCC, Berman Community College, and I live in Ozone Park, Queens. Personally, and I'm sure a lot of people here and not here can agree with me, but I think both proposals are garbage, is part of my language, because it just seems to me like you guys, you raise a fare every two years and nothing is really done. The trains don't come on time, they're still filthy, they're still inadequate, and it's like, you raise it like all, you know, a quarter every two years. It might not be a lot to you guys, you can afford that, but people who live in areas like me, you know, lower-income areas, like $30 is half my paycheck. 112 is like, you know, my entire paycheck, 116.50, I can't even fathom that right now, and I'm sure I'm not alone when I say that, especially, you know, the living cost of living in New York alone is almost, it's like you have to be rich or a tourist to live here. If you're a native New Yorker, it's like, you know, they don't even care about you. But I think that it shouldn't be raised at all. I think, you know, $2 was a lot, and 225 was too much, but, you know, 250, I'm willing to settle with that, whatever benefits or lack thereof, but going 275, and then, you know, all you guys are going to do is increase it the next two years to $3, then 325, then 350, and it's like, the price goes up, but our paychecks don't go up, you know? Price goes up, but our pockets stay down, and I think it's really unfair to the common New Yorker to have to constantly, constantly pay this increased fare, and I don't see anything being done with the quality of the trains, I don't see anything being done with, you know, the efficiency, or even the knowledge of the workers that you employ, you know? And it's like, I don't want to, I know it's not a question and answer seminar, but I would like to know where all this money is going, why you need to raise a quarter every, you know, three, every two to three years, it's ridiculous. I remember when the, when the train was 150, when I was a little boy, and now it's almost $3, and it's just ridiculous, and I just want to, I'm glad this podium to vent on that, because I'm sure I'm not the only one here that feels that way. I know it's, I'm not here to be politically correct, just to be honest, I think that it's bogus that you're raising this another quarter, because all you're going to do is raise it again, and again, and again, and if people keep paying, you're going to keep raising it, because you guys, I don't, you know, it's just, that's the way you operate, but I think it's unfair to, you know, the middle, you know, middle-class, lower-middle-class, and just poor people in general, because I know contrary to popular belief, not every New Yorker is a multimillionaire. We don't have money to keep doing this. It's like, it's ridiculous, and I think you guys should leave it where it is, 250 is the max, and it should go back to $2, if you want to be hon, if you want to be completely honest. But thank you for hearing me out, and I hope you can consider what I just said.
Thank you, Mr. Staton. John Benjamin. Mr. Benjamin will be followed by Nancy Rankin, and then David Paul Gerber.
Good evening.
Mr. Benjamin.
Good evening, Board members, Chairman, Vice Chairman. My name is John Benjamin. I'm a resident of New York, 61 years. I've watched this system over the years for a long time, and I see that you're trying to modernize the system, but at what cost, and the cost to who? I have my own proposal, and I'm going to leave it in the back, and I hope every one of you get one of these, and I put it in the mail, I even put it to the Governor, his staff. I think what's happening here is, you got all these projects, you got billions of billions and billions of dollars, deficits running, bonds from 30, 40 years ago, obligations, insurance, employees, all this stuff going on, you see? The people obviously don't understand that when you say you're short 16 billion, they say, "How? We just had a fare increase two, two years ago. Here we got another increase coming. What is it going to do? Wind up to be $5 a day, one way, $5 back, $10? Take a family in consideration, that's almost $70 a week. I'm proposing that there be a two-tier system. What do I mean by that? You have residents who carry it across, and you have 55 million in tourist people that come here every year. You mean to tell me you can't charge them 750, and the tourists, keep it at 250, $5? I don't understand how you cannot be innovative and creative today going forward. Forward, this system is 110 years old. You are trying to provide a world-class system, but on whose backs? Tourists come here from around the world, 55 million tourists. The city boasts about that. It's great, but look at what you're charging them. You're charging the residents $5, the tourists $5. Why not the tourists $7.50? I'm sure they would be gladly to pay $2.50 more, I'm sure of that. How do I know I'm a vendor? When they leave and go back to London, Europe, Latin America, they leave me a $48, $50 card, "Here, you can take this, I don't have no use for it." I wish the Board would consider that and take the residents in consideration. I'm going to leave my proposal in the back, and I hope every one of you get my proposal. Thank you very much.
We will. Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. We've been joined by Board Member Robert Bickford, due seats to my left, and the next speaker is Nancy Rankin, then David Paul Gerber, and after him, Joanne Polisi.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Nancy Rankin. I'm Vice President for Policy Research and Advocacy at the Community Service Society of New York, an organization that works to advance upward mobility for low-income New Yorkers. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of CSS President David R. Jones, who regrets that he cannot be here in person tonight. Since the MTA announced proposed fare increases, much of the debate has been about trade-offs between base fares and bonuses. The issue I am here to raise this evening has gotten virtually no attention. That is, the fares are already unaffordable for vast numbers of New Yorkers. There are many people, like the gentleman from Ozone Park who spoke to persons before me. He is not alone. In our most recent annual survey, the Unheard Third 2014, we asked a question about transit affordability for the first time, and were stunned by the findings. One out of three poor New Yorkers said they were often unable to afford subway and bus fares. While better-off New Yorkers can take advantage of buying an unlimited monthly pass, those struggling to make ends meet, like the gentleman who just spoke, can't lay out that much. Seniors and people with disabilities can get half-price reduced fares on the MTA. Why not the poor? The logistics have been solved for these other groups, so the main challenge is the potential for lost revenue. If low-wage workers cannot afford to take a trip now, then the revenue loss might be relatively small, and the main impact would be to increase ridership. But we also need to seek other revenue sources. The MTA relies much more heavily on fares from riders to meet operating expenses than other cities. 58% in New York City compared to 44% in Chicago, 38% in Boston, even lower in Philadelphia. In fact, the public is already on board with this proposal. In the survey cited earlier, we asked New Yorkers whether or not they favor offering half-price fares to low-wage workers. Nearly seven out of 10 said, yes, they like the idea. Some smaller American cities already offer discounts to low-income customers, and the details are in my written testimony. In London, people who are unemployed, looking for work, or receiving income support can receive a half-fare public transit discount valid for three months. Post-recession job growth in New York City has been concentrated in low-wage sectors where workers earn so little that offering the subway fare, affording the subway fare has become a daily hardship. Thank you very much.
Well timed. Thank you, Ms. Rankin. David Paul Gerber.
I got to take a look at you. Okay.
And then, Joanne Polisi.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is David Paul Gerber, private citizen and newly formed blog called Gerber's World about things in general. Discussion about the MTA subway fare, they're quick to point out that it can only take about three months to come to a process from public hearing to vote and then raise a fare. Sometimes, when you talk about, it could take about years and years if the MTA, if you want the MTA to do something. Sometime, as I list right now, neighborhood maps on the MTA website contain old information, sometimes as far back as a hospital from 1966, which was closed. On Sunday, November 8th, when the MTA was showing off the press about the Fulton Transit Center, riders were so confused because none of them could transit between the AC 2, 3 with the 4 and 5 on the Uptown platform, because there's no service notice was ever posted, and nobody bothered to check the service notice that was, to see if it was posted or not for that Sunday. On November 18th, when the Hunts Point Station received new elevators, the Transit Authority President Carmen Bianco and Ruben Diaz and elected officials, while they were showcasing the elevators, two signs there completely wrong are left unchecked. One of them, the BX 54, the other one contained a BX 45, a non-route. The winter weather plan, the MTA is not transparent about that. Out of the, like, the dozens, so times that the MTA had called for winter weather plan, there were only three times last year that they posted the correct service notice for the No B service, and no alerts about the 5 train coming from Noree during the AM rush. On board car, subway car announcements, none of the MTA Board members or the MTA Bus act as if they ride the subway, and many times I've observed that the R train was transferred available at Bow Hall Station, even though the R train at Court Street was closed due to either repairs or due to work due to the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy. This also applies to construction projects where last weekend the 4 and 5 were not running to Brooklyn, and the previous weekend where I've observed that the 2 and 3 were not running to Brooklyn. Standing at the station platform at Chambers Street where the ANC meet, conductors were even saying on the weekend that the path was running at the World Trade Center when they were not running on weekends. The wrong signs like, wrong signs like the 110 Street, Central Park North has a sign saying that the MTA is completely rebuilding a new single system, not on the West Side Line, but on the Western Line, and the completion date was for 1996. And Charles Motorada, although he's probably the Bronx hearing, I have a message for him. If he's more concerned about backpacks, he should be more concerned about how the MTA delivers service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gerber. Joanne Polisi, to be followed by Trudy Mason.
My name is Joanne Polis. I'm a native New Yorker. I had no intentions of coming here tonight, but yet again, three limited buses went by my local stop this morning, most of them, all of them, practically empty, so if you're more geared towards moving equipment than people, you're doing a great job. I'm a single-income household. I'm trying to make ends meet. I'm trying to stay above the rising costs of everything, and trying to plan for the future, because I can't rely on Uncle Sam very much. I've been at my job eight years, my last raise was six years ago. I'm not going to complain, I have a job. A lot of people don't, so I consider myself lucky. But the point I'm trying to make is, we're all trying to do more with less, every one of us. I don't mind paying my fare share, I don't mind paying taxes, I don't mind paying fares, and I resent the smirk, but I want to tell you this, we can talk when you start treating the money people give you with the same care that I know I treat the money I get to keep. That's what you have to do. Show a little prudence, get on board, learn to do more with less. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Polis. Trudy Mason, to be followed by Scott Hutchins, and then Yuki Endo.
Good evening. I'm Trudy Mason, the Manhattan Borough President's representative on the New York City Transit Riders Council. I reside on the Upper East Side of Manhattan and consistently use all modes of public transportation throughout the MTA region. The NYC TRC is one of three New York State legislative mandated councils that make up the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA. NYC TRC met to discuss the fare proposals, and the following reflects our thinking. The fare proposals that are the subject of this hearing contain less severe increases than those of the past, and we appreciate the positive concerns of the MTA in formulating them. These fare proposals represent the inevitability of the fare increase that will occur as the cost of providing service rises. However, funding all MTA components, including New York City Transit, must be accomplished in a way that is fair to riders and takes into account those who are most heavily burdened by fare increases. Therefore, we believe that a fundamental principle of MTA funding is that those who benefit from our public transit system should share in paying for its operation and upkeep. While this includes subway, bus, and commuter rail riders, it should also include motorists, business, and real property owners. All who rely on the vibrant economic engine, that is the MTA region, should realize that it is only made possible because we have an extensive and efficient public transportation system. However, we are concerned that these proposals to increase the fare only affect riders and will continue to shift the burden of funding the MTA onto the system's users. This strikes us as being patently unfair, because there are no commitments of increased fund- funding from other stakeholders. Riders have kept their commitments to financially support the MTA system. However, this structure which supports the MTA is constantly eroded by continuing threats to MTA funding streams, such as the use of what is supposed to be, quote, "dedicated transit funds," unquote, to meet New York State's general obligations. MTA riders already pay the highest percentage of operating expenditures of any public transit user in the nation. In 2012, the last year for which national data were available, this figure was 53.2% compared with 33.2% for systems nationally. Subway and bus riders pay 52.6% of operating expenditures, while subway riders alone pay a stunning 73.2%. The MTA's proposals represented here reinforce an increase in the proportion of cost that is borne by riders. However, since we have to choose only between the specific proposals before the board, we believe that regular users of the system, if you can give me one more minute, I have one more paragraph to read, okay? We believe that regular users of the system should be less disadvantaged by a fare increase. It is for this reason that we prefer Proposal 1, where the base fare increases from 250 to 275 and keeps the bonus concept, rather than Proposal 2, in which the base fare stays at 250, but all bonuses are killed. While there is no difference in the cost of time-based Metro cards between the proposals, the roughly one-half of MTA riders who benefit from MetroCard bonus, especially low-income persons who have difficulty paying for weekly or monthly cards, would be harmed by Proposal 2. Those who would seem to benefit most from Proposal 2 would be mostly casual users, including tourists, other visitors, and those who occasionally ride subways and buses. We strongly urge this board to consider the interests of its best customers and preserve and expand the bonus incentives that are provided to encourage riders to use the system. Therefore, we clearly support Proposal 1. Thank you for your attention to the views of the New York City Transit Riders Council.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Scott Hutchins, and then Yuki Endo. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with the statements of many of the people who spoke before me, including this previous person right before me, and the person who had the tier, two-tier system. I am a homeless New Yorker. I live in the, I've been living in the shelter system for 30 months. I have a physical disability, but I don't qualify for it. I need a cane to stand for more than an hour at a time, but that's not disabled enough in order to qualify for the reduced fare card. And I, the other thing I want to say is that every single time you've had a fare increase, I've noticed the service has gone significantly down. A lot of phantom buses in particular currently. I live near the M9 bus, and sometimes you can wait as long as an hour for it, and that's not what's posted, not even close. And it happens a lot, and I see the same people on the line complaining about it. Every single time you raise the fare, the quality of the service goes down. I really, this is called public transportation, it needs to be supported more by taxes. I'm very much in favor of the Wall Street transaction tax, which could make MTA free if were actually implemented properly. Though, that's what I have to say. I disagree with both proposals. I think it should stay the same or possibly go down. I think you need to make better use of the funds that you're getting, and that's my basic point because I didn't come particularly prepared for this, and I could have brought statistics like my, the previous person, but I didn't. Thank you anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Yuki Endo, Mr. Endo here? He'll be followed by Jessica Nizar, and then Nancy Singleton.
Good evening. Many is you cannot listen at the Jackson High Queens and member of the Long Island Bus Service Union, which represent Long Island Public Bus Service. I depend and realize on the New York City subway buses, a video of the Nascanti-Nice Bus, which is the county B line and this island turnway, and NTA stand island that way. I have next opinion on regarding the fare hike. I do not support fare hike because of the foreign station. Many service and buses like the 456, 1782, and 320, and SBS, and N15, N34, N60, are not overcrowded. And N15 SBS are crowded during the weekday rush hour. A 343 bus are always crowded, when there's even at the Derby Center, and N60 SBS are often crowded, not all time, even on the weekend because the necessity of the authorities at the local airport does not get meaning of pay before you book. Another, another reason why I do not support fare hike, because the MTA defers to provide MetroCard bond service into the nice bus territory, because only four MetroCard-bending machines inside the Henside Tunnel Center often break plans at, at the, hosting the Nascanti-Nice Bus Rider, at, at, at the look for a store that says MetroCard or host that pay by the cash or the nobility ticketing for the nice bus. And I will support fare hike, and if the MTA can input New York City subway and the buses, especially on the busy route like the 15 local SBS, N4, N60, 34, 42, BX 1, BX 41, and 44 SBS, 720, 820, 2, and 320. And I will support fare hike, and if the MTA can work together with the nice bus to provide MetroCard bond service to the nature shopping mall. Like a Sunday, 3 a.m. work on the, this of your, Hixby Station, Henside, Nino 60 Charlie, Nino 34 Hixby, and that here, Long, Long Beach Station, because it is unfair which the county B line bus riders are trading with the MetroCard bond service. And, and, and industry fare of the place includes that affair both New York City and the nice bus. I, I give both dispatcher for the MTA and the nice bus, I should work together to improve communication for the details, because the necessity of the bridges and the...
That's right.
And, and, our, our nice bus is no longer part of the MTA funding. I will not support fare hike on the MetroCard, and because it is expensive on the Saturday day MetroCard. And then, I do not, I support fare hike or the toll hike on the Long Island Dido and the Internet of Bridge. I do not support a toll hike on the Cross Bay and the Bridge, not as much, a place that dispatches all the torture, and essentially yours to it.
Thank you, Mr. Endo. Jessica Nizar, then Nancy Singleton.
My name is Jess Nizar. I am the senior organizer at the Riders Alliance. We're the grassroots organization of subway and bus riders, pushing for better service, affordable fares, and a stronger public investment in public transportation. The fare hikes we're discussing tonight have been long in the making, and I realize that the MTA board members who are sitting here tonight have decisions before them about whether or not and how to enact this fare hike proposal. Folks who are upset about the fare are right to be so. Funding public transit by raising fares is a regressive way to fund a service, and the entire regional economy relies on it. But the real decision-makers are not here tonight. In the end, Governor Cuomo and the members of the state senate and state assembly are the only ones in a position to decide whether the MTA has the resources it needs to do a job, do its job effectively. In particular, our elected officials must decide whether to fully fund the next five-year MTA capital plan and whether they will assign new revenue sources to fill the $15 billion gap in the financing plan for these much-needed capital investments. If Governor Cuomo and members of the state legislature do not come up with the new funding sources, the MTA will have to support its capital needs by additional unsupported borrowing. In a recent report, Comptroller DeNapoli estimated that $1 billion in unfunded borrowing will require revenue comparable to an additional 1% fare increase, meaning that if our elected officials don't step up, there could be a much larger fare increase around the corner. In addition to speaking up to MTA board members who are here tonight, we encourage our fellow riders in this room to join with us to hold Governor Cuomo and our elected representatives in the state legislature accountable for the consequences of their important funding decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nizar. Nancy Singleton? Thank you. What's that? Was that right? Yeah, don't, yeah, don't leave it. Nancy Singleton? Hi. Okay, thank you.
Hello, hello lovelies and honeys all over the world. The subway and buses made a lot of progress. It would be nice to have more ramps on the subway and bathrooms, and paint the subway, make new trains, wash the subways, bus, and buses up. Thank you very much, Ms. Peony, Nancy.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Jeanette Jones? I see you.
I've got a few little picks. Number one, the 51 bus. I miss it. I'm no longer, in the past, what is it, a year and a half that it's been gone? I have not been able to get to Brooklyn. I made the mistake one time and decided to try the subway. Horrendous, ugly, no. The 51 bus, I lived down here. It was like a 15-minute ride to get over there. I could catch it right there at Canal Street, where I could catch it downtown when I finished up down there. Then I called the MTA, and they suggested, well, you can go catch the bus to Queens, and then from Queens you catch another bus to Brooklyn, which will get you to... That is not acceptable. I don't do accessory, bad experience on that, so we're not going to go there either. But I really would appreciate the 51. Now they have that wonderful Barclay Center, and all of these wonderful events are taking place. I can't get there. I can't shop downtown Brooklyn because I no longer can get there, you know? And as I said, a couple of times with the subway, it's been, you get on at one stop, and you're not able to get off in another stop, or you get on these disgusting elevators that unfortunately, I guess because there aren't enough bathrooms, people decide to utilize them, so it is not a good feeling. Then the other thing I want to bother you all about is the fare hikes. I mean, it's like, I moved here from Texas. New York City does have the best get-everywhere service, but the disadvantage is that, in reflection of the cost of living and what people make, or maybe what the little people make, it's very expensive. It sounds great, you know, $200 a month, but if you're on minimum wage, that doesn't work. I'm not on minimum wage anymore. I'm on retirement, but it's kind of the same thing because it's a fixed income, and I'm stuck with what I've got, and it's, even though I get the half-fare price, it's a lot. Then I've got kids. So then I have a kid who rides the school bus, so he doesn't have a MetroCard. And if I want to take advantage of these wonderful free opportunities that they have here in the city on my fixed income, it gets kind of hard because kids are 250-year, either way they go. Now, the nice thing, I don't know if y'all have ever seen the Beva bus service that San Antonio, Texas has, but the nice thing that they used to do in the summertime, all the kids had what they call like a bus pass, where they had access to go to things, you know? Maybe that would help get the kids out of the street, you know? Yeah, there's going to be one or two that use the bus passes to do something stupid, but there are going to be a lot of parents that are going to be able to take their kids to the museums, libraries, all of these free events that New York City does provide, but the cost of transportation, it's too much, you know? Even the ones that have the bus pass, even the bus, the school bus passes, they're not based on what your income on, they're based on how far you live from the school. So if you happen to live close to the school, then they can't take advantage. And then there are kids who don't live close to the school who do get the bus pass, and then they decide, oh, well, I don't want to take the bus, and they, you know, jump out and take a cab. And there are kids that can't do that. There are some things that I really wish the MTA would think about, take into consideration as far as that's concerned, and it's...
Can you wrap up, please? Can you wrap up, please?
Yes. I'm so sorry. I'm a bit long-winded.
That's right. Take your time.
But, yeah, so those are, if you could really keep that in mind. Returning the 51, finding a way to make it affordable, and then maybe you wouldn't have so many, what is it, turnstile jumpers and kids getting on the bus and saying, I don't have my bus pass or whatever, you know, because they're too ashamed to say, you know what? My mom doesn't have the money, or my dad doesn't have the money, so, you know, I don't want to front up for my friends. I mean, stupid things happen. So that, elevators, more accessibility, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for turning out, Ms. Jones. Thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Jones, and all our speakers. For the moment, at least, we have out, we are out of public speakers. If you are here and hadn't planned to make any public comment but wish to, I remind you that until 8 o'clock, you can re, you can register to speak at the tables outside the auditorium. And here comes some, a list of more speakers. If we run out of speakers, we will momentarily recess. If they don't show up immediately, we'll take a break, but we'll be here at least until the end of the registration period at 8:00 P.M. The next speaker is, it looks like Barbara Rendez, followed by Gary Young. Did I get it right, Barbara? Rendez? Then we'll move on to Gary Young. Thank you for coming.
So I live in Queens, and I go to school via the train every day, and I've been realizing that the train been late every single day for a variety of reasons. Like, sometimes there's a train stuck at Grand Central, sometimes there's like, it got stuck somewhere in between the stations, somebody just ends at Queensborough Plaza for no reason, like, it gets people late to work and school, like, 60 minutes late is not good. And although I really agree with the fare proposals because you're really in a bad funding state, and the governor haven't really given you any funding for new capital projects, but I think you should save on labor costs, and, because those are the biggest expense in the MTA system. And also fix those aging signals, because like, it has a problem every day. I know I can expect a delay on a raining or snowing day. It's just not good, like, everyone's late to school, late to work, and everyone's panicking, and everyone's stuffed on a crowded train every single day. So I think you should really fix the signals, and like, it's not good. I don't want to be 60 minutes late to school every day. And it's a miracle that the train's on time today because it's never on time. Overall, I believe in the second proposal where you raise the fare to 275 and keep the bonus because I think it's actually fair and much easier to calculate. It encourages people to use MetroCard, and it encourages people to reuse MetroCard because it will have leftover balance inside a MetroCard. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Is Barbara here? Barbara Rendez, I believe? Then the next speaker is Tasia Rosa? Okay, to be followed by Ryan Carson.
Ms. Rosa? Hello, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. I hadn't prepared anything too formal, but I figured, why not? I'm actually here today to testify as a private citizen in support of proposal two. I actually am in favor of eliminating the bonus. More recently, I've started buying, rather than the unlimited, just sort of paying per ride. And I've been noticing the bonus, and I don't really feel that it is beneficial to me. What does end up happening is there's this odd amount left on the MetroCard. Next thing I know, I've misplaced the MetroCard, and suddenly, that 25 cents is gone. For me, as someone who commutes every single day, it is a burden and it does, it sort of gives you a false sense of, oh, you're getting better bang for your buck. But that's rarely the case, I feel. At the same time, I completely understand that the capital budget these days is seriously suffering. I want to congratulate you guys so much on your very hard work in the wake of Hurricane Sandy. It was amazing, the turnaround in service that happened. And I was very impressed, I think we can all say that. However, I feel that this burden should not fall on the riders. I know that it comes from Albany. I know that the problem pretty much lies with the state legislature and Governor Cuomo. But in the meantime, I feel that, you know, eliminating the bonus wouldn't be so bad in terms of the average New Yorker, the one who is investing in public transit here every single day. I would like to keep the fare at 250. I think that's something that reasonable for, you know, the average, everyday New Yorker, someone who's commuting every single day and truly investing in the system. I also think that raising the fare for paratransit would be a terrible thing. Disabled citizens don't need an additional burden. They don't need the extra struggle. I also want to congratulate you folks on amazing developments in bus rapid transit and select bus service. I live along Nostrand Avenue in Brooklyn on the B-44 corridor, and I've already seen the improvements that it's made in my community. People are moving along faster. Nostrand Avenue has been repaved. The community around is really improving and changing very quickly. And, you know, in terms of traffic and just sort of everyday commuting, things are really changing. However, I am very concerned about the closure of the Cranberry Tubes along the AC line, the longest-running train line in the city. I'm very concerned. Should you close the tubes between Manhattan and Brooklyn, my commute will double. I've got about a half-hour commute these days, and that is fantastic. I'm very lucky. But, you know, if I have to take another train, if I take the 4 or 5 in Brooklyn, for example, I will be commuting for an hour every single day, both ways. So I hope there's a really great contingency plan. I'm sure you all will put your heads together and work something out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosa. Ryan Carson.
Hey, everyone. My name's Ryan. I am a Brooklyn resident, and I commute every day to Harlem for work. So I appreciate you guys all taking the time out of your busy schedules to talk and meet with all of us. So I just want to take the moment, I wasn't planning to speak, but since nobody else is going to, I'd like to take the moment to say that I oppose the fare hike. I work mostly with college students, and so I see often, you know, what this, what the fare is already doing to their budgets. Spoke at meetings before opposing past fare hikes, and I was really hoping not to have to be at another one to do this. But that being said, I'd just like to propose, maybe instead of putting so, putting the burden on us riders, maybe perhaps you guys take a cut and pay? Because, thank you. Because, you know, there are MTA officials who make over $300,000. As somebody who, before taxes, makes $33,000 a year, it's actually insulting to me to think that I have to be the one who has to kind of sidle this burden over. There are many MTA employees. You guys should actually, these are public records, so you guys can look this up. There are a lot of MTA employees that are making in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Several MTA employees actually make more than my entire household makes. So, you know, for those of us who actually do have to rely on the MTA, everybody who's sitting at this table I know doesn't actually have to rely on the MTA for transit. It's really infuriating for those of us who, you know, I can't afford a car, I can't afford any other forms of transportation. This is how I get myself to work. And, you know, it's just unbelievably insulting to me that people who are making in the hundreds of thousands of dollars are trying to make me pay more money. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope you guys consider my proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Is Barbara Rendez here yet? No? Yes? Thank you. She'll be followed by Allison Chabibo.
Hi. I don't work full-time because I can't find full-time employment, so I cannot afford for the weekly fare to be upped a dollar. It needs to stay the way it is. Otherwise, I'm gonna be walking to work. I live in Brooklyn. I'll be walking to Long Island City, and I don't think that's feasible in the wintertime. I don't care what you do with the other fares, just don't touch the weekly.
Thank you very much. Allison Chabibo. And then Deborah Murphy. And then Sarah Alpert.
Hi, how are you? I'm representing commuters who take the Long Island Railroad with the monthly MetroCard as well. I just, I just think it was a year ago that we hiked the price, and it's just, it's so expensive as it is. It's 242, plus the Metro is 349 a month. I mean, it's just a lot. It's great, it's convenient, like, we love you, we need you, but please don't raise it for the people who are commuting every day. Maybe the single ride, you know, that's mostly tourists, maybe. It's just the actual New Yorkers that just, like someone said, like, need it every day. Just maybe the monthlies, leave them as it is because to go from 242 to 252, when just a year and a half ago, we already raised it. So maybe, can we find a more creative way to find out, you know, people that need it every single day just to leave it and just increase the single rides? I really don't have any ideas. That's your job, right? I just, please don't raise it. That's all I had to say, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Murphy? Ms. Murphy will be followed by Sarah Alpert. Take your time, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Devora Murphy, and I'm just here to say, please do not raise the fare. We cannot afford it. The subways are horrendous. They're filthy. I mean, really, really filthy. Plus, the service is very, very slow on the 34A. I had to wait 59 minutes for a bus last night, and it was kind of chilly out there. And also, I'd like to say, like Ms. Jones said, could you please bring back the B-51? Because I can't go to Brooklyn otherwise. I really don't like the train. The bus was convenient. Plus, it would bring more revenue in with all the tourists that we have that's going across the Brookbridge. They can take the bus back. Plus, they can look at the other stores just down there. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Alpert.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I just wanted, I know someone just talked about the Long Island Railroad, but the Long Island Railroad prices are out of control. I think she lives in a zone closer, but I currently live in Astoria, and I had to move from Long Island because I was trying to live with my dad. I, okay, so I went to school, and then I came back, and I got a job in Manhattan. I thought I'd live at home and save money, but I could end up not saving any money because of the price of Long Island Railroad on top of an unlimited Metro. And if you raise it even further, it's gonna be $413 from Zone 7. And so I ended up having to move because I figured just pay a couple extra hundred dollars for rent than paying for the Long Island Railroad. So I really think that we need to do something. I know it might not necessarily be on you guys. It's a state funding issue, but there really needs to be some changes to the Long Island Railroad and the price. Furthermore, the MetroCard shouldn't be going up either because that's getting out of control as well. It's just becoming really unaffordable to live here and very difficult to work and commute at the same time. And then the only other thing that I wanted to say, I wish that you guys had the countdowns for other things. I live off the end of the queue, and that would be really great to have the countdowns for those. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Alpert. For the time being, we're out of speakers. So we'll take a break right here, a break right here at our seats while we wait for more. Checked in, then we will take a 15- or 20-minute break. There he is.
Okay, we have one.
You have a speaker?
Yes, we do.
Hello, Mr. Jagliello?
Wait, wait till the microphone comes on, sir.
Wait just one minute, please, Jim.
So one thing that I would like to point out, that one way the MTA can collect some money for, and avoid raising the fares, how about if the MTA imposed a fine or some form of punishment against people who refuse to give up their seats to the elderly and the disabled? I happen to be a disabled person myself, but sometimes I find a lot of people on buses and subways to be very rude and nasty at me, and they would refuse to give up their seat. Suppose there was somebody in a wheelchair or in crutches, or there's a pregnant woman standing next to me, and they wouldn't do it for them either. So what I would do is, I would recommend that there should be a fine or other punishment imposed against anybody who does this. One time, I was on an E-train from Forest Hills to Jamaica Center, and one person even told me to sit on the floor. How gross could that, that person be? Those are the people that we do not need in our transit system. If somebody does that to somebody, they should be thrown off the train or thrown off the bus immediately, and the police should come. They should give them a summons or impose other punishment, maybe jail time or community service. That might, might do something. We need to have people show more respect for the elderly and disabled in our city who need our public transit. And if somebody, and if people don't show any respect, they should be punished, and punished severely. Also, another thing about the select bus service, the frequency of the number of times that inspectors come on to, on to, check to see if people pay their fares. I ride the B-44 select a lot, and I very rarely see the inspectors coming on the bus, on the buses and checking to see if people are paying their fares. We need more step-ups of that. Maybe that would generate some more fare revenue also. And not only that, on a lot of other buses, especially on the, on the Woodhaven Boulevard buses, the 11, the 21, the 52, and the 53, sometimes I've seen lots of kids and other adults, too, go board the buses, go to the back of the buses without paying their fare, and they take up seats that rightfully belong to fare-paying passengers. That has to stop, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jagliello. We're gonna wait five minutes or so for more public speakers to register. At that point, we'll take a break of 20 minutes or so. Going to reconvene, we have, we have five more registered speakers for the public. Once again, if you came and did not register to speak and have not, but decided you would like to, you have until 8 o'clock tonight to sign up to speak or attend future hearings, as have been publicized. Our first next speaker is Jean Rushinoff. He'll be followed by Helena Darku. Hope I have that right.
Good evening, Chairman Prentigas, and board members and staff. I'm Jean Rushinoff, with the Strath hangars campaign, a transit riders group. New York subway and bus riders have four, have had four fare hikes in seven years, well over the rate of inflation. And we share the anger of the public about the cycle of rising costs. But the reality is, that's not the biggest game in town. The biggest game in town is your $32 billion capital program, which is pending now in Albany. That will either make the difference between a decent ride and a fair commute and something that was, we thought, a dim, distant thing in the past. But that means our politicians have to find the money to fully fund that program and get us those new subway cars and buses, rehabilitated stations, replace track and signal. And I have a list in my testimony, which I'll leave off. The, the list is like a Christmas or Hanukkah or non-denominational religions gifts. There are lots of things that the riders can expect if that program is adequately funded. The one that many riders are most familiar with are the countdown clocks, which have made a huge difference in people's daily commutes. New cars on the C train. I must have rode one of them in 1964, '65, going out to the World's Fair, and it's time for them to be replaced. The new buses with low floors and three doors and taking the reality of New York, which is that we have the slowest buses in America, and turning them into something that people look forward to using. And the list goes on, Wi-Fi and scores of stations. One of the things I think is important to take a serious look at, which is intrusion detection, some way of finding out if someone's on the tracks, and new technology to make it easy for people to use smart cards. So I'd end by saying that the best thing that Governor Andrew Cuomo can do for the millions who take transit is to win a decent, robust program to fix our age system. And that means finding real resources, not borrowing billions and leaving the riders holding the bag. If Governor Cuomo succeeds, he will be a hero from Sheepstead Bay, where I grew up, to Woodlawn in the Bronx. If he fails, the city and the region will be badly hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rushinoff. Helena Darku? Helena Darku, and then Joseph McNish. I hope I have that correct.
Hello, good evening. We're here today, a friend of mine and I are here today to protest against the fare hike. People in New York City are hurting. There are a lot of people who are doing very well for themselves, but at the same token, there are a lot of people like myself who are single parents, who work mediocre jobs and receive mediocre pay and just cannot afford for the fare to be hiked any more than it is. Not to mention the level of service. The buses barely run on time, so do the trains. Now, I have a job where if I'm late to work, my pay will be docked. Now, I have a job where if I'm late to work, my pay will be docked. I make about $9.50 an hour. So, if my pay is docked, and I make $9.50 an hour, and the bus doesn't come early, why should I have to leave my house two hours early? When you got fat cats who work for the MTA, who get chauffeured in every day by Lincoln Town Cars? It's just not fair. We can't afford it. There are constantly people being pulled off the buses, because they're 10 cents, or 20 cents, or 30 cents short. And then you turn around and have detectives pull them off the buses, only to give them a $250 ticket. What sense does that make? Are you proving a point? Are you teaching them a lesson? I don't think so. I think in your minds, you think you're proving a point. What you don't realize is that you are hurting this economy as well as this society. And as a matter of fact, today, I walked from the Staten Island Ferry here, because I cannot rely on your transit system. So, when you guys start to do better, when you guys actually get up two hours early to commute, and leave your chauffeured car limousines, and you can actually acknowledge and understand what the people are going through, then maybe I'll get up two hours early. Until then, it's not gonna happen.
Thank you very much. Joseph McNeish, do I have that name correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, stroke, five years ago, so bear with me. I think there should be, switch to 401Ks. The pension is busting the budget. According to this, printed off for the internet, the pensions, MTA is more than $2 billion. Would it be? I don't exactly know the money amount, but I would like to know. My question is, was the payroll, and at 3%, like so many private companies have 3% matching 401Ks? Now, Michael Mike is retired in Florida. He worked 25 years at the Fire Department. God bless him, he retired in 1981. He's in Florida, and he's still alive, about 80 years old, God bless him. He worked for it, he deserved it. But, pensions are busting the budget. In Detroit, and I oppose the bailout for the GM, but consider switching to 401Ks. I would like to know what the payroll budget? I know the Fire Department is about $1 billion, $100 million. Now, 3% of that would be $33 million. Guess what the pension costs us? $1 billion. The payroll is $1 billion, $100 million, and the pensions are $1 billion. If this switched to 401Ks a long time ago, 3% matching would be $33 million. They were out of math in grade school, $33 million is a lot less than $1 billion. Do you tell people not to smoke, don't drink or drive? You raised the Bloomberg, raised the tax on cigarettes, okay, young people are smoking. Guess what? They'll live any longer. Live any longer. Also, this is not your jurisdiction, but quickly, I think it would be fair to raise the sorcery age 100% to 69, and see what happens. That would save money also. People will take the money at age 61, 62, 80%, that's good enough. That would save money. People will live a little longer, some people live to 80. Now, also, Governor Snod Walker, I sent in $20 a couple of years ago, he made the unions put more money into the pensions, the healthcare, pay more money than healthcare. You want healthcare when retired? Pay for it now. What's wrong with that? I would totally agree. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeish.
I would like to write a letter to you people.
If you have any questions, then talk to the people at the desk out back. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Hatab, Rania Hatab, then James Russell, and then Ann Goodrich.
Good evening, hi. My name is Rania Hatab, and I want to say right off the bat that I do not support a fare hike, as it's already been brought up several times tonight. The average New Yorker cannot accommodate such rapid rises, such rapid, frequent rises in fare, especially when the quality of transport services isn't rising in parallel to those hikes. And, on a slightly separate but still linked note, we hear countless stories of people jumping turnstiles, and this is not due to rowdiness, this is due to necessity. We can't continue to ignore that there is a dramatic wage gap in our country, in our city. Yeah, thanks. Many people simply can't afford to get around anymore. Oh, raised myself up a bit. And I believe that the MTA shouldn't be in the business of creating dichotomies. I would think that your goal as an administration would be to do what you could to foster goodwill among commuters and police, and having violent altercations between police and turnstile jumpers does just the opposite. Also, by raising fares and doing so frequently, we force commuters into a corner, and we shouldn't feign shock when they attempt to get themselves out of those sticky spots by jumping turnstiles, for example. We should also consider ways of catering to students. I myself am currently enrolled at Hunter College, and I commute every day, seven days a week. So I would suggest that you please consider extending the student MetroCard to college students. And lastly, I strongly urge, as everyone who's already spoken has said to some degree, that you place great pressure on the big kids in Albany to make sure that private lending is kept at a minimum, and that they contribute their fair share of funds to maintaining public transport and keeping the fare where it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Ann Goodrich.
Ladies and gentlemen, any thought of raising the fare is outrageous at this point. It's totally inconsiderate, it's totally inconsistent with the levels of danger, I won't say safety, but danger on the trains. You've had fatalities on your train system. I received letters on the seats of the train that says, "We're focusing on safety now, so let's not look at our punctuality." So my trains have been late in the morning. Myself and others from the town of Hawthorne, where I come from, spend over $3,000 a year if they're daily commuters, but they're not getting the service and the safety for that. And the station at Hawthorne is in terrible condition. There are two youth facilities in the area who regularly damage that station. Last Monday, I was there, and they had a soccer drill on the vending machine and put their foot right through it. I called the Mount Pleasant Police, they came in about two minutes, they asked me to stay for the MTA police, and I waited and waited, but nobody came. I've never seen, in the 27 years that I lived in Hawthorne, one MTA police officer on that station. I want to see video cameras there, so that people can be safe, first and foremost. And any thought of a 10% type of raise is outrageous. How many people here have received a 10% raise in their salaries? More like 2% if you're lucky. And there have been, as Mr. Rushinoff said, over four raises in the past seven years. It's unthinkable to do this. We want to see results, improvements in safety, in security, in punctuality, and then, maybe, a 1% or 2% raise down the road. But we want to see results first, and I want to see results at the Hawthorne station. I have with me a tape of the incident last Monday, and I want to speak to someone in the back here before I leave, from the MTA police, to get a commitment to have safety, to have police officers on that station, and to have video cameras. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ann Goodrich. And then Elise Bell.
Good evening, once again. Thanks for having, this is my second year, to a second hearing all the time. This is a related issue that I deal with in quite a life. As other speakers have mentioned about it, people who jump into turnstile, and they don't have no money whatsoever, it's always a pain in the neck. What could happen? If they ain't stopping fit, to our subway car, our turnstile, and our station personnel, and our platform, are they gonna do that as a suggestion? Let's think about it. More and more people in this city, nationwide, are in the poverty level, and that is completely unacceptable. And the homeless situation, the mental health system, is getting worse, worse, and worse. Over 12 years of Bloomberg, 10 months with the de Blasio, this caused alcohol, caused the progressive administration, and this has to fix the solution. If we went to like, might have power, where we do the chokehold that you done to Eric Garner, shoot up like Michael Brown, and other people with police brutality and stopping fris, this all has to wake up. If we had to tax the wealthy and the 1% to pay our fair share in our system, we're not gonna go through and have the main material, put it cheaper, like it's gonna come from cheaper products to be made in America, not the one like in China or overseas, that are called TPP, AKA the Trans-Pacific Partnership. Because if we have it like, all over, this past several years, if we cannot go back, our taxpayer dollars, our civic, our neighborhood, they're the live blood of our system. If we commute, if we pay the price, very much. So, if we have like, to put a proposal number two, if we can keep it that way, we're gonna have to go through the same problem, over the last 10 years. So, this is what we facing. Our workers, if we work to it, or we work hard for it, everybody go through fast food chain, and corporate chain, they'll have, some of these workers don't get those rate benefits, they can get low pay! That's completely a disgrace! That's totally disgusting and it's getting old! So, think twice before you have, when Cuomo re-elected, then get, with the Republican control of the House, and now to control the Senate, what's gonna happen? They cut the Fufu stamp, they cut everything, benefit Medicare, Medicare, what's next? Benefit for our Trinity Eight? That's totally disgusting! So, let's give, so you have to get a strong message. Let the rich pay their fair share, tax the wealthy, and tax Wall Street. That's my final answer. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Elise Bell. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm actually going to speak on a couple of different things. I am also in opposition of the increase for the fare, but I'm also a little bit concerned about some other things that I don't seem to be hearing. At the end of the day, this increase might benefit MTA, but it's also a disservice to the city of New York, the state of New York. We give out enough funds in car fare for HRA, and for these children to get back and forth to school, that it's ridiculous. Now, if you're even gonna call yourself raising it the hot quarter, that's an extremely high amount for the city of New York to be paying out for these car fare, for the individuals to make their appointments, for these kids to get back and forth to school. I also see a problem with these metro, our transit workers, and the way in which they treat these children. These fares are paid for by the schools, and they get these little MetroCards, and you got drivers won't let the kids on the bus, whether they have a MetroCard or not, regardless, it's been paid for. This is the way these kids are getting back and forth to school. It has to be supplied, like it or not. And these individuals jumping on these kids getting on and off buses, I witnessed enough times that it's deplorable. But at the end of the day, we have a problem with the handicap access to almost every station in New York. There's an issue. We can't get half these individuals that are having handicap issues on these buses, we can't get them on the subway. The steroes, the station conditions, it's deplorable. We don't have bathrooms, these individuals can't get in and out accessibly. It's, again, you're raising the rate, and we're not seeing anything trickle down, quote, to our riders, period. I'm also concerned with the fact that we have creatures that we are bringing home with us off these public modes of transportation. We've had bedbug issues, we have issues with insects, period, in the transit system. Anybody that stood on a station platform after 8:00 PM has to run away from a rat, a mouse, or something else. And at the end of the day, we have all these insecticides and all these pesticides down there for the rodents, and we're overwhelmed by them. Even though on the streets, it's not just a transit problem, it's a problem, period. But at the end of the day, it's a big problem. You're a top-vale station in Staten Island, I'm curious why I have to pay to get on it, and I have to pay to get back off of it? If I sat on the platform for a half hour and the train doesn't come, and I decide to leave the station, I have to actually buzz the emergency transit system in order to buzz me out of the station? Yes, I jump a turnstile. How else am I exiting the station? You have nobody actually manned at that station to dish out MetroCards, or even to open the doors. So again, how do you exit out of a station once you've paid to get in it? I can't exit it? That makes no sense to me. Customer service skills, we really need to address that. Again, we're raising our fares, but we're not even acknowledging the way that these individuals treat our clients.
Thank you very much. Do I have that correct? Kachisi Bland? I'm sorry. You can correct me.
Good evening. My name is Kachiri Bland.
Kachiri, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'm against the fare hike. The service is horrific, the conditions of some of the trains and buses are a hazard to our health. As a recent college graduate, it is a struggle to afford the price of transportation. The economy is still not great, therefore it's hard to find a full-time job. The fare should not be increased. Why should we pay more when the service is not the best? Once again, the fare should not be increased. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've been a resident of this city since 96, I'm 26 years of age, and so far, as far as I can remember, we've had three fare hikes within that time span. From the economics of learning, from the learning of economics that I've come from, most times a fruitician, within the changes of policies, within pricing and fares, within the waivers towards people, and social action, takes more than a decade to see if there's any fruititional growth into how it actually works to transpire for the whole general outing. I can understand if there was a seasonal thing, where during like, the summer season or something, when tourists come in, that there's a fare hike, because there are more people, there's more opponent fares, you can get over in a raking. But having a whole continental fare, where after we get all fine, well-adjusted, adjust our finances, adjust our whole living economics, based on to, okay, now it's $2.50, a dollar if I lose the card, 120 if I want to go ahead and get an unlimited for 30 days, 30 for this, 40 for that, and then you switch it up over and say it's gonna be a new hike again. There are many people, not just me, some that are much older, some that are much younger, some that are disabled as well, that are losing out on situations of abilities, being able to go and see their family, being able to go to their doctor's appointments, or being able to go for other things, to where they'll leave from transportation, leave from public transportation, and they'll, will go, end up start going back into carpooling. And then what's gonna happen? Then with that, we're gonna have high traffic, especially with the 25 mile per hour law, people are cutting down on that, but people are still not following that law yet, it's not being fully regimentally enforced, I mean, to some extent it is on certain routes and roads. But still, it's gonna have such a, it's gonna have such a big drawback when you don't, I would recommend a seasonal. I'm not saying that if you guys say, okay, change it, change it. But, I think that a seasonal change in between the transportation, like maybe during the high tourist season on transport would make more sense, because with that slow cutting, you could go ahead and have a transferable and have a transferable fund. And if anything, for somebody that does go ahead for an unlimited, or for a 30-day or seven-day unlimited, if they use their credit card in marketing, they should be able to at least have insurance on towards if they lose the card, and they shouldn't have to be going file bots to if they need to get a repayment for the card. But this is just me. I haven't gotten any college degrees, I don't have much of an understanding of things besides what I know from the people that I've experienced and been around, and I'm hoping to learn more maybe one day to be able to have that ability to make those judgments. But I would think, just off the, off cuss, from the things that I've learned, and from the lifetime I've spent of dreaming of being able to make a change in this world, that sometimes the pressure of just wanting to cut off and do surgery, when sometimes therapy is the better thing, or sometimes a placement of slow recession would be better, I think it could make a difference. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. At the moment, we have no further registered speakers, so we're going to take a recess right here at the table. We are approaching the end of the 8 o'clock deadline for registration for speakers. We currently have one speaker who will call to the rostrum, and then we'll see if anyone else appears between now and in the next few minutes. So our next speaker is Gigi Sains. Ms. Sains, Ms. Sains, I'm sorry. We're not going anywhere for a few minutes, so we'll wait to see if Ms. Sains returns to the room. We'll try once again to see if Gigi Sains is here. She is the last registered speaker, and if Ms. Sains is not here, and we have no other registered speakers in the room, we're going to thank all the public speakers for coming, and we will adjourn.
No, no, no.
I'll remind you that we will be in White Plains tomorrow, in Queens on Wednesday night, and also in Melville, Long Island on Wednesday night, and then next week, we'll be in Nyack, Staten Island, and Brooklyn. So we thank all the public speakers for attending tonight, and we wish you all a safe home.